Welcome everybody here tonight. And please be aware that the meeting is being recorded for use on the internet and on local cable station. The first thing on the agenda is the public hearing. Is there a motion to continue that public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, to reopen.
To reopen, okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move. Continuously hearing of renewal of cable television license, Comcast cable communication established and adjust basic service ties programming equipment and installing rates for the town of West Bridgewater. Does he have a cable committee here? Do they have a report on that?
Yes, Zach Roman, Chair of the Cable Committee. Obviously you know Ben very well. So we, the timing was a little off for the last hearing. We appreciate you giving us a little time just to go through the license one last time. We had a meeting, went through the license, one last pass through, and the committee has recommended to the Board of Selectmen that you approve and sign this license. We go three to nothing, only had three of our five members there at the time. It's a really good deal for West Bridgewater. I'm not going to take up too much time. You guys talked about this pretty well through the last meeting. And it gives the support that the town needs to continue the operation that Ben has kind of set up here in town and run to help our public education and government. So again, we recommend that you go ahead and approve this contract.
I see there's something there with the seniors. They get a discount?
Yes.
How do they go about to get that discount?
It's a size letter to the contract. It's not actually in the contract. And the way it works for the senior discount is for basic cable only. So any senior in town who only has a basic cable package. There's a few requirements. One is proof of age. And I believe the other one is related to retirement stamps. Some of those, I don't know if they actually use that in their determination, but the age obviously they do. And I believe the age is 65.
And what do they get out of it?
They get a, I want to say it's 10% off.
I have the letter right here. If you'd like to take a look at it. Major was 65.
And again, unfortunately, it only covers the basic cable package. So if any of the residents that are senior citizens have the cable package that is above the basic cable, they wouldn't qualify for a discount.
All right, so they got 10%?
Pretty oil plate for all of them.
Okay. Does the board have any questions on this license? David, do you have any comments?
I do not have any comments at this point. It's, there's a summary in front of you, and if you have any questions, I can sort of...
And that's for how many years? 10 years.
Is that the whole contract?
That is the summary. The whole contract is in the package. It's a part of...
You should have...
I remember getting the...
You don't have the whole contract?
I remember getting the entire contract a few weeks ago, but I think it was still, there were some amendments being made. So I've never actually read the contract or the summary, either or. And I do recall when I quickly flipped through the 100 pages and got to the section that spoke to the pricing that the residents would pay. It seemed on the high side to me, but I didn't really have anyone to talk to about it. And there was a representative from cable in the audience, and I was hoping to follow up with her and discuss it.
So, one of the, sorry to interrupt. One of the common misnorms about the process for this is you're not allowed to set rates hard and fast in a licensing contract. You can open in good faith, you know, implore them to kind of keep rates in a good place, but you can't actually set the rates for consumers. That's not a downside of this process. You can put in fail safes and put 99% of the time are never agreed to by Comcast. They, the senior discount is kind of like one of the things they'll lock in place, and it's done on a side letter, not as part of the contract. So it's in, the only thing that really you would have been able to, or the town would have been able to go after or try to get from Comcast would be a Comcast store in town, which 99% of the time they would just give us extra money for our capital if that's what we really wanted. But they don't, I also, my full-time job is working for Holbrook in the same role that Ben does, so I know the world pretty well. We just went through our cable licenses. It's actually a little bit better than the Holbrook about two years ago. And they were not interested in discussing rates. And again, it's all federally regulated. And it's a process that they just don't entertain because it's not, they're not obligated to set rates with towns.
Okay, so the rates that were published in that...
Those are, those are their assumed rates today.
Okay.
And times change, inflation, and all that kind of stuff, so it will shift and change at market hours.
Okay. What about service? I hear a lot of complaints about internet service throughout the town.
So, sorry.
That's okay. And again, I'm sorry to spring this on you like this. I was hoping we would continue this so we'd have time to really have a reasonable conversation about it. But I hear complaints in town about service from Comcast for internet service. And I know they have different tiers, but it...
So oddly enough, this license that we're discussing with Comcast only regulates their cable service. It does not have anything to do with their internet or phone service.
Okay.
Again, it's kind of weird, catch 22, because the technology of our world has changed so fast.
Right.
This is all based off the Cable Act of 1984. There was a rewrite in 1992, I think. So all these regulations and all the contractual obligations that Comcast or Verizon, any other cable provider has, this is all strictly cable-based, not internet. So the town doesn't, when, when you get your bill at home and it breaks down to cable, internet, phone, the town is really only getting funding sources from the cable base. So anybody paying more for internet, or anybody who cuts the cord, so to speak, and only has internet, doesn't help the town in relation to Pega access fees. It's only cable-related.
Okay.
So if there's complaints and issues with cable service, like the actual cable, usually it's, I mean, we have Comcast at home, so I know, usually if one's wrong, one's bad, the other one's bad too, because it's coming through, it's coming through the same cable that comes to your house. But currently, there's no, there's nothing federally that regulates or defines how providers kind of have to give back to communities that they give those services to, which sounds odd. There are some things kind of federally and statewide that are trying to look at those to try to advance the Cable Act of 1984 to, you know, 2019. But it's a little behind the times because the technology hasn't, has advanced faster than legislations may be to keep up with.
Okay, so just so, you're way more experienced in this than I am, so just so to kind of summarize what you said, as far as the pricing for the residents, there's nothing that we can do about that?
As a town or Board of Selectmen, there is not much about it.
Okay. And as far as internet service, there's nothing we can do about that, other than as individuals contact them and see if there's anything they can do?
If it's cable-related, again, if residents have issues with cable, under this license, you, the board has authority and the town administration has authority to discuss these issues with Comcast to get rid of those issues.
Yeah, I'm speaking specifically about internet service, so that would be separate from the cable TV. And the contract's for 10 years. My, and I've heard this, and I'm not up to date on all of the latest technology, is that this type of technology is probably going to be outdated in about three years.
100%.
Okay. Okay, five, yeah, three to five years. So we're entering into a 10-year contract. Where does that put the town? If the newer technology comes out in four years, and we're locked into a contract on the older technology?
So there's kind of two ways to look at that. One, this is a, as people switch and they change their technology, this is a license that affects the cable stuff only. So they're still going to be delivering their product. I think there's going to be statewide and federal legislation that's going to have to come into play, because really, at the end of the day, what Comcast is paying or giving, providing back to the community is based on rights of way, public rights of way. Basically, you're giving them permission to use the public rights of way in West Bridgewater to run their cables and provide their business. And until the federal level, I mean, I would love to see you guys try at the local level to impact that a little bit, but many have tried and many have failed because federal law and legislation supersedes anything that we're going to try to do here. So I think secondary to that, if there's a new technology that comes along, they're not going to withhold it from the residents of West Bridgewater. They will roll it out here, and you just won't have any real oversight on some of that and won't impact this license necessarily.
Okay. So this doesn't put the residents at a disadvantage?
I don't think so, no, because Comcast has already upgraded, I don't know specifically in the town, but they've already spent money on infrastructure for, they don't have, the entire town isn't on coax cable. They have fiber in place in a lot of places in town, just so that they can service the area that they provided in West Bridgewater. And if they can, you know, increase their revenue by offering the latest technology, they're going to do that.
So in the event of better, so no other cable provider can come into town, as long as this contract is in existence, right?
Incorrect. There's a clause in here that allows for, if a competitor were to come into town and want to operate their business in West Bridgewater, the only thing it stipulates is that we're allowed to do that as a town, if anybody wanted to come in. The only thing was, we wouldn't be able to give them a better deal than what Comcast was getting. So if, for example, if they're giving us 5% of their gross annual revenue, another company that came in couldn't, if they, if they signed an agreement to give 4%, Comcast would have to come down to 4%. It's just a competitive balance thing for them to make sure that they're not giving more or providing more services to the town than any of our competitors.
Okay, and the funds we receive through Comcast, that goes into the general fund? Or where does that go?
That would be one. I think it's, I can't remember the name of it, but it's a special fund set up for the PEG-related need of funds.
So four times a year, according to the contract, we're going to receive a quarterly check. The last handful of years, it's averaged around $26,000 a year or so. It goes into a cable account, which is what Ben and the Cable Committee oversee. In addition to that, just $125,000 upfront money for capital would go into that account as well. The only money that comes in from them is an annual licensing fee, which is around $1,200. We receive that normally in about April, and that does go into the general fund, and that's why you see in your budget that we have $1,100 set aside for the Cable Department, Cable Committee. And so that is how we fund that, that line.
All right, thank you. Very thorough answers, appreciate it. David, you've read the rest of the contract. You're pleased with it?
I am. I mean, I was, I'm glad that we, because I received some information tonight as well. I honestly didn't know that it did not have anything to do with internet.
Yes.
But it is almost identical to the contract that we had, except for the areas that have been renegotiated, is actually better for the town. The old, we used, it says 3.5% to 4.5%. It started at 2.5%, escalated from there. For the town to recite 5% of gross revenues is really good. The original contract did not provide for upfront capital. Now we're going to receive $125,000. We also...
Also, I just wanted to interject. So the biggest thing I think about the $125,000 is because technology is changing, and some people are kind of shying away from cable and getting internet only, that helps continue the operation at a good level and supplies the funding we need kind of upfront, as some of this funding might dwindle as time goes on.
And as we do have to update some of our digital channel, you'll see that in the bottom of the page, they're also going to provide up to $15,000, so that way we can do that in addition as well. So when I take a look at everything that is in this contract, it is a better contract than we're currently operating under. We all have frustrations with Comcast, because let's face it, they're the only player. We would love to see more competition, because that would drive down price, but that would be a huge investment in somebody else's product that unfortunately nobody's willing to make. So I think we make the best deal that we can, and based on the fact that this is everything that we had plus additional, I think it's the right thing to do.
Then I'll make a motion, I'm sorry, unless you guys...
I'll answer you. Do you have any other comments?
I have nothing.
Anybody have any comments out there that wants to speak? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, put your motion.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications.
Second.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
A second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Thank you. Thank you, Ben and the Cable Committee.
Something David said about competitors. My understanding is Verizon, they don't install fiber anywhere anymore, because they don't want to, they don't want to be in the cable business. So the likelier that we would get another competitor coming to West Bridgewater at this point is, unfortunately. Verizon might update their infrastructure as they go on, they go more towards wireless technology in the area, but that's probably, to get a competitor at that kind of level, I think that's what we're, you have to wait for that technology to get there first.
I had Verizon for internet service, and the first year or two was terrible. Then it improved. It, the internet service did, did get better, but it wasn't FiOS, and West Bridgewater doesn't have it.
Correct. They don't have fiber in the old coax stuff, so that's why it's not as good.
Wasn't stable.
Correct.
Right.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
How's that you? Okay, Mr. Hardy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hardy's Catering LLC, 740 North Main Street, change of hours request.
Yeah, I'm looking to open up a little bit earlier, just to get some of the lunch crowd in. And we always just concentrated on the catering, so we're trying to redo the restaurant a little bit and focus more on young families in there and get more of an afternoon lunch crowd. And we just, just went in there, painted new walls, new, this is when I see new walls, new painting, flooring, new menu design. So at this point, we're just looking to open up an hour earlier.
So you're going to have some limousine, limousine, and all the nine guys there? You have any comments on that?
What are the current hours now, and what are you requesting?
I'm just basically requesting to open up at 11:00 a.m. I do have a full liquor license there. I'm just requesting normally I open up at 12:00 in the afternoon, so I'm just requesting to open up at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, that's the only change? Okay, I was...
To open at 11:00 and to serve alcohol at 11:00, not before that.
Correct, yeah.
That's, that's reasonable.
And then you have any comments?
It does say 8:00 a.m. on here.
It says 8:00 a.m.? Is that a mistake?
No, that was a mistake, thank you.
Yeah.
So it would be 11:00 a.m.
Okay. I have no issue with that.
Well, he runs a fine place up there. We haven't had any problem with him.
Yeah, when I heard 8:00 a.m., I had some concerns, but...
No.
I wasn't, wasn't sure who the clientele was coming in at 8:00 a.m. from Mimosas. But do we need to do anything to change this? It's been published, right?
Nope. All I would do is, is that regardless of how it's published, it comes down to the vote that you take, because you're the licensing authority. So as a result, if you're inclined to approve the request, just make sure that the motion stipulates that it's 11 o'clock.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the change of hours for Hardy Catering LLC from 12:00 a.m. to an 11:00 a.m. opening and liquor license.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call for the board, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any others collect?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Goldrider, a town treasurer.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Just have some borrowing documents for you to sign tonight. This is a $3 million ban, which is a bond anticipation note. Those are our short-term notes. $2.5 million of it is rolled over from school loans that we had taken out last year. We're still waiting on some MSBA reimbursement of that.
How's the interest rate?
Uh, the interest rate came in good. It was 2.125%, which is 0.4% lower than November. So interest rates are coming down right now, which is a good thing. The other $500,000 on it is for the water department and the special town meeting article that was approved for the water tank. So that's the $3 million on that. Bid was awarded to Oppenheimer. Any other questions?
What's the, this is a ban, it's not the long-term?
Nope, this is short-term. So this will be due in November.
Okay.
And then we're gonna, we're gonna pay off probably 1.5 million of it in November, and then put the other million into the annual borrowing that we do then, that covers the fire trucks out there and other water articles.
On the water articles, part of them, it's long-term borrowing, and, no?
The separate water article. There's a couple that are bonded long-term.
Okay.
And then we have three, I think, right now, on the municipal purpose loans, only four that they're paying off yearly.
I guess real simple, what I'm getting to is when we did the water tanks, we thought we could qualify for, I think, a 15- or 20-year loan, or 30-year loan, whatever it was. And then last minute, it came down to we could only qualify for 10 maybe. I just wanted to...
For this one or a previous one?
Previously.
Okay, yeah, I don't know about that one.
Previously, so just whenever I hear water borrowing long-term, I just want to make sure we're looking at the term we anticipate we can get?
The bans have to be paid off within 10 years.
Okay.
So unless we end up bonding it long-term, then it'll just be, we'll pay off 10% every year.
Okay.
Any questions?
No. First thing to sign is a certificate of the town clerk. Just says what the terms of it are, and we attach a copy of the vote to that.
Scott, do you happen to know off the top of your head, what is our total debt?
Long and short-term? Um, it's around 30 million.
Around 30 million?
Yeah, most of that's still the school. Alden, do you need a motion to approve this, to approve the vote?
Yeah, approve the whole thing, yeah.
I make a motion to approve signature of the borrowing documents.
Second.
Is there a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this one for 63 million, that's because it's covering...
So the 63 million is what was initially approved for the school?
Okay.
We didn't, but that included the MSBA portion.
Okay.
So that's why that's like that. And then since this was an add-on to it, that still falls under the initial town meeting
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Alden, I'd ask if you consider taking items H and I out of order? We have the electrical inspector here, so that they don't have to sit through the rest if they don't want to.
Yeah, that's all right. Electric inspector here. And that's what, on H?
Yeah, H, so...
H, accept the resignation of Assistant Inspector Inspector Gregory Paul.
So moved.
Is there a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Send a letter of thanks?
Yes.
Okay. Ratified appointment of the new Assistant Electrical Inspector Paul Halligan?
Second.
Motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Sorry, motion. A little out of order.
Okay, all right. Are any of these people here that want to say hello?
Aye, I'm Paul.
Okay, they're Paul, all right. Okay.
Hello.
Uh, then you know the building inspector?
Oh, yeah, yep, I know Mike White.
Okay. Do you have a motion and a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Uh, oh, is that it?
Yep, that's it. And Mr. Chairman, I just want to take one minute, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
The board does not have much opportunity to see David Bentley. David is our electrical inspector, and since he is here, I really want the board to know. The board is, and the town is very fortunate to have him. He does a very, very good job. He is here this week because Michael White is on vacation. He didn't have to be here as much as he is. He's here tonight also to represent the building department, not just represent the electrical department. So again, I just want to make sure the board is aware that he's here and that he really is truly doing a good job for the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. I hear a lot of good things about you as well.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank, thank you for coming in. So move back, through approved motions, make recommendation, and sign readers for the annual town meeting. Okay. Article 1, to hear all reports from county officers, it's kind of a routine. Board of Selectmen consent article there. Article 2, 3, it's printed on the want. Who wants to take that?
I'll take Article 2.
Okay. Can you use Article 2?
So just to let you know, Article 1 and 2 is the same, so you'll make one motion.
One motion, okay. Uh, 1 and 2, and now we're on 3, see the town chairman's salaries are falling, select the town officials for, this is beginning of July 1st, 2019, I'll take that one.
Ian, while you're on it, you also vote on your recommendations, so would you want to say that, how do you want to handle that? If there's no objections and you keep moving on, we assume that it would be a recommendation. How would you like to handle that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, yeah. We could move that along with our recommendations.
Okay.
Okay, we're on 4, all right? Finance Committee, Meredith Anderson. Uh, that's Article 5. Okay, uh, okay, Board of Assessors, Steve McCarthy. Uh, be an Article 5, right? Okay. Getting back to, for, that's the finance matter, and now Article 5 is Board of Assessors, Steve McCarthy. Some of my money, state aid, construction, that's chapter 90, is that, okay, Anthony, you want to take that?
Uh, which one?
That'll be Article 6.
Uh, that's assigned already to Chris.
Okay, all right. I'll leave it with Chris then. I move, all right, 7, John Cruz, water pollution, facility project repairs, that's the Board of Health. Community preservation, Cheryl, will take that. Number, all right, 9, Cheryl will take. And 10, have all articles that Cheryl will take. 11, Cheryl. And 12, Cheryl, community preservation. 15, Cheryl. 14, Cheryl. 15, Scott Goldrider, treasurer. 16, Police Department, Chief Flaherty. Okay, that's on the web task force. 17, Municipal Building Needs Committee, Akabral. 18, Fire Department, Chief May. The Fire Department, under the defibrillators. Okay, Fire Department, Chief May. Recast, transfer to 3,000 to 1,000 to be, to pay for share of the grants awarded by the source capture vehicle exhausters. Okay, now we're going on the 20, and that's, that's the... Okay, now we're going on the twenty, and that's, that's the, uh, Police Department, uh, Chief Flaherty. Twenty-one, Police Department, Chief Flaherty. Okay, twenty-two. All right, Chris Anatelli, Public Works. Twenty-three.
I have a question on twenty-two. Dave, do you know what chipper this is?
Yes.
We talked about this a little bit in the meeting, I forget how the prices of the different ones.
Yeah, so I went back and I... This is the chipper that they originally requested.
Last year.
Uh, no.
Or this year?
This one. This one is for this year. The one they, they requested last year was a gas-powered, and it was just, it was just underpowered. And the one that currently operating is gas-powered as well. And so after doing some research, it, this is what they requested, this does seem to make the most of most sense. It's diesel, it's larger, it's what they need.
Okay.
Okay.
Eldon, could I interrupt your floor?
No, go ahead.
One second. Do you plan on doing one blanket motion to recommend all of these articles? So as you're going through them, if we wanna hold something for discussion and approval separate, is that what you'd like us to do?
Yeah, it'd be done that way.
Works for me.
That way we can do it the most efficient way? Okay.
Okay, uh... Chief Flaherty, uh... Okay, um, and Chris now with the, uh, chipper, we're on the chipper. Okay, uh, all right, Article twenty-three, Public Works, again, Chris. Public Works, Chris is a new Ford F-150. Okay. Uh, Article twenty-four, uh, Chris. Public Works, uh, surveying services for the site, design a new transfer station building. Okay. Uh, that's Chris. Okay, Chris. Uh, raising appropriate transfer available funds, uh, department of Public Works. To purchase installing new cold storage facility to facilitate the boys, uh, to dispose of the old facility. Chris again. Okay, twenty-six. Uh, appropriate transfer available funds, some money spent by the town treasury, pay town debt, on Article twenty-four of the annual town meeting. And that's Treasurer Scott Gola. You can interrupt me anytime if you, if you have questions or anything else, all right. Uh, Article twenty-seven. Uh, see if the town votes, closes out the Article four of the special town meeting. Uh, the traffic design studied in East Street and East Center Street. Is, is that, uh, are those lights working, I got Dave down there, or, or where's the story there? I, I know that there was a po, a pole, uh, that was supposed to be moved there, and that's, is that what's holding it up, primary?
That is what's holding it up, and we have started to dig into it. The person who is in charge of pole relocation, uh, has now put us on his docket, and states that his hope is, is that he will be done what he needs to do within the next three to four weeks to be able to go out and move the pole.
Okay.
Who does the per, person for pole relocation work for?
National Grid.
Now, is, is reported the, the black dot was coming up, is that gonna be, uh, taken care of before the contractors finally come to win in?
Yep, so, uh, we all met out there last week. They, uh, had, met with the developer, or the contractor, along with the person who did the actual paving. There is no doubt that there is either some frost heaving, or there's some, something strange with the tower. The assumption is at this point that it was a bad mix, and so this past week, they went back out and took core samples. They will analyze the core samples, uh, determine as to whether or not if that's the real issue. Bottom line is, is that we are going to have those patches repaved, and if it determines that it's all bad patch, then we will have to do a larger, a larger section, but we're working on that part as well. We have a one-year warranty from the date of substantial completion, and the person that oversees the project for us has notified I.W. Harding that we have not signed off on substantial completion yet, so our warranty, warranty period has not begun.
All right, there was a question, sixty thousand dollars for the, uh, for the sidewalk, has that been resolved, or?
No, I, we have not heard back from I.W. Harding on that matter.
Okay. All right, now Chris will be presenting that article.
I'm sorry, I'm still stuck on the pole mover for National Grid. And that they can't move a pole, they, they've been on notice for over a month and a half, two months, that we need the pole moved?
They've been actually on notice since September of twenty eighteen.
Well, they custom, when I got ahold of one of the representatives there, everything that's down below on the pole is gonna be moved, and then National Grid will move the pole. So I sent the girls out there to take pictures one day, and, uh, and that's what I think was holding it up, is the utilities that are on the bottom of it. And, uh, that's why it was held up.
Is this a highly unusual job?
It does, it does happen every... It does happen, anything unusual, but, you know, it's just that, uh, you know, uh, it's been a long time there, and it should be done, you know?
So I'm just curious if in three to four weeks, they're gonna tell us, well, now it's four to five weeks, because the pole mover is unavailable to move poles. Maybe I'll be unavailable to pay my National Grid bill. That was sarcasm. But it, it's just, it's outrageous, we put all that, and it's not your fault, through no fault of yours, it's just, I-
So I've done, again, we've done some extensive work on this over the past week. It turns out that, um, this is speculation, but I think I'm on safe ground when I say this. Money talks. Uh, they are, we are in extremely busy constructions phase at this point. They are on average getting paid thirty to fifty thousand dollars per pole to move it from private contractors and mass DOT. State law is municipalities do not pay for their poles, and from talking to more than a handful of people, municipalities always slide to the bottom of the list, because National Grid does not get paid.
Could you provide a, a name and telephone number and contact information for whoever's in charge of the pole mover, so that the residents can have this information, maybe they can reach out to National Grid as well? I'd like to provide them with that information, because they've been asking for months. And, you know, maybe for a few more people contacting them and asking them to help us out, they'll get it done a little sooner.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Article twenty-eight, reason appropriate, feel to be expanded by the Board of Selectmen for the construction of sidewalks. Hundred thousand, some free cash. Uh, Board of Selectmen, uh-
I can do that one if you want.
Okay. Uh, twenty-nine, public transfer available funds of money, Board of Selectmen to purchase netting for TIF, acetylic fuel, agenda to one oh six, or take any action. Fourteen thousand, all right. Uh, Board of Selectmen, transfer of free cash of some fourteen thousand, spent by the Board of, purchase netting for the TIF, acetylic fuel, agenda to Route one oh six, I'll take that one. Uh, to see if the town, uh, Article City vote, raising appropriate transfer available funds, borrow some money to be expanded by the, data process to upgrade the net infrastructure. I, Ed Sorrow. Okay, uh, maybe move that one. Okay, uh, yes, I might probably, available, some of money expanded by the school committees to cover the costs of unanticipated unbudgeted. Special education costs a hundred fifty thousand. School department, uh, Donna, uh, will, will take that one. Uh, thirty-two. Uh, see if the town of order, some master general law, chapter forty, to establish reserve fund utilized in upcoming physical year to pay without further approach appropriations. Okay.
I'd like to put a-
Now, this is school department, Sue, Sue Sullivan, you wanna put a hold?
Hold on that.
Okay, hold on Article, uh, is there any reason why you're putting a hold on it, or do you have a specific question, or?
Well, I'd like for us to discuss it. So if we want, if you want Eldon to hold it until the end, and then we can approve the others maybe in bulk, and then hold these individually to discuss and approve individually. I don't think there'll be too many held.
No, no, we're gonna hold them, all right. Uh, we're gonna hold, uh, this article, thirty-two. Thirty-three, uh, raising appropriate transfer available funds, uh, by the town to pay off, comes out of the annual town meeting, replacement of the library roof. Okay, and that'll be Treasurer Scott Gola. Any questions on that? Article thirty-four, Hilton raised appropriate transfer available funds to borrow some money expended by the library trustees to install exterior interior cameras. Uh, associated security items at the Westbury Library Public Library. Ten thousand dollars. Okay, and that will be the library, uh, Deborah Lancaster, who presents that one. Article thirty-five, is an, that's, that's a library, uh, Article two. So upgrade and move the network cable and racks and switch boxes at the Westbury Library Public Library. Ten thousand dollars. Library, Deborah Lancaster, will move that, thirty-six. Reason appropriate transfer available funds, borrow some money to attain, uh, town stabilization, or take any action, uh, I'll take that one. Board of Selectmen. Uh, thirty-seven, see if the town raised appropriate, available, borrow some money expanded by the waters, commissioners continue permitting of the new water source, or take any action. Eighty thousand dollars, that's the water superintendent, Wayne Pax. Uh, see if the town raises appropriate transfer available, to borrow some money expended by the water commissioners to refit the piping of the Spring Street tank. Altitude valves in the new above-ground building, or taking action. Uh, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That, that's gonna be a bar in the article. All right, that's the water superintendent, Wayne Pax, will present that one. Thirty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna let you know, I've been informed by the Board of Assessors, um, right at the beginning of the meeting, Article thirty-nine, Article forty, both are pilot agreements. They have not, the Board of Assessors have not been able to reach in a, a contract with either vendor. As a result, neither article will be moved to town meeting.
Um, David, Mr. Profetti was present downstairs. I don't know if anything-
That's without action, is that?
After that?
No. The note that I received, um, five minutes into our meeting, is that they have not reached an agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Not reached agreement, huh?
So then why don't we hold number thirty-nine in number forty?
Okay. Party, hold. Board of Assessors, hold, all right. Forty-one. Home rule petitions, special legislation concerning special police officer, all that is, uh, this is a long one. So... And that'll be Chief Flaherty. Uh, Article forty-two. Uh... Will vote to rescind its entirety of Article forty-three of the town general bylaws. Be scheduled for the seals of waste and methods, the current bylaw regis follows. And that'll, uh... That's the Board of Selectmen. Would like to take that one? Cause it's waste and method?
I can do it if you want.
You're gonna do that? Okay. Got to work on it. Okay, Board of Selectmen, forty-three. Rescind entire Article fifty-one. Okay, uh, planning board, Hugh Hurley. Okay. Forty-four. Okay, the planning board, uh, Hugh Hurley again.
And just to let you know-
Zoning bylaws.
Yep. Article forty-four, uh, the Conservation Commission has decided to no longer support Article forty-four. In your packet, there is a memo from the Conservation Agent to both the planning board and to the Board of Selectmen, asking that we rescind the article. It's too late, because the agenda was already posted, so it has to be on the warrant. However, it will not be moved at town meeting.
I have a question, so, um, for the cigar wrapper one, why is it that, um, Hugh Hurley presents that instead of the person who went in to ask? Um, I, I don't really care, I'm just curious why. Do residents typically not move articles, or is it typically board members, or?
No, residents could move it. Uh, it's certainly something, if you would prefer the resident to move it, as opposed to Mr. Hurley, what we can do is that we can reach out to the resident, ask him. I will say this is a general bylaw and not a zoning bylaw, so my guess is if Hugh does it, then I would state that he's moving it as chairman of the bylaw study committee, as opposed to the planning board. But if the, if the board would prefer me to ask the resident, then I will certainly do that, and if he's unwilling or unable, or maybe he won't be there, then I can ask Hugh to do it, but as a chairman of the bylaw study committee.
I mean, I have no issue with Hugh doing it if he, if he wants to, I just think it would make more sense for the person who wants it, because I don't know, Hugh may not support it individually himself. So it wouldn't necessarily make sense for someone else to present it?
I agree, I agree. I, I think in this particular case, I think you're right. Um, if the board has no objection to this, I would rather reach out to that resident, ask him if he would be willing to move it. He's normally at town meeting, I would presume he would want to move it. But again, I, I'll reach out to him as long as the board is okay with that.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, David, on Article forty-four, you said that will be rescinded?
It will not be moved. It will be on the warrant, but it will not be moved.
So we should hold that just for when we do the bulk vote?
Article forty-five. That's the Board of Health.
I'd like to hold, uh... Is this the parking spaces, Article forty-five?
Yeah, hold on, Article.
Okay, I'd like to hold that.
Okay, uh, forty-six. That's the medical marijuana there?
Yes.
That'll go?
Yep.
Uh, that's Hugh Hurley, uh, forty-seven. Okay. That's the planning board, Hugh Hurley. Okay, any questions on that? Article forty-eight.
I'd like to hold that.
Okay.
So if that's, we have one, two, three, four, five, six articles that have been held. If I understand the process correctly, what I would ask the board then to do is to take a motion at this point for all of those that have not been held, that you, one, approve the motions, you approve the readers as presented and as stated, and that you are also, um, in favor or recommending those respective articles.
Is it a motion, I think?
Eldon, I have one favor to ask. Would you mind if I presented the one for the netting at the school for fourteen grand? I'm chairing the recreational committee.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's fine.
If you're doing it too much.
No, 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 that's fine.
Gladly give you one of the other ones if you want them.
Oh, that's fine.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh-
I'll make a motion to approve the motions, and approve assigning the readers, and make a recommendation that we're in favor of all of the articles except those that were held.
Second?
Okay. Uh, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, the ones with, we gotta get a list of the, the ones that were held there.
So the first one is Article thirty-two.
Article thirty-two.
So David, could you please give us a refresher on what this article is about?
Yes. Article thirty-two, I believe, is- Article thirty-two, I believe, is stabilization account or the forearm special education. So... Yes. This is new legislation that, um, is about two years old now. A handful of school districts have approved it. And, so our school department is looking to do the same. Basically, what they're asking is, is that on annual, well, right now, what they're looking to do is to create a reserve fund. They're not looking to place money into it, they're looking to create it. In future budget years, they would have the opportunity to come to the town and ask us to place additional monies above and beyond their budget into this reserve fund. The reserve fund could only be used for three purposes spelled out in the article. Special education, out of district tuition, or transportation costs. That is language straight out of Mass. General Law. Once the money is placed into that fund, it cannot exceed two percent of annual net school spending for the school district. Right now, let's assume around fourteen million dollars. So at two percent of that, you're talking about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. It can never exceed that amount. Once the money is in the account, if the school superintendent believes that she needs access to those funds, she would have to receive an affirmative vote from two boards. She would go to the school committee, and the school committee would have to approve the expenditure. Then she would come here to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen would have to approve the expenditure at that point.
So, I have two concerns about this mechanism. One is having a separate line of accounting for a budget. So rather now than looking at the total school expenditures, you need to look at two places. One, this stabilization account. And secondly, at their budget, tally them together, so you get to the expenses. My other understanding is that there's no clear guidelines on how this can be funded. That if there are excess funds available from the school's budget at the end of the year, they can decide on their own to transfer those funds to the stabilization account. That as of right now, there is no standard rule to that. And we don't have any, um, say over that as well.
So, um, I was concerned about that as well. Um, and so we have done a couple of things to do our homework on it. One is that we have reached out to the Department of Revenue. The attorney for the Department of Revenue has instructed us that you, that monies left over in the school budget cannot be placed without town appropriation into the reserve fund. We have also spoken to lead our town council. Our town council believes the same, and he will have a letter written before town meeting that will specifically address this issue. That that will not, that the school department will not be able to transfer funds directly from their budget into this account.
Okay, so now, now we cleared up that. But again, I go back to my other concern is that we're carrying, um, two different lines for a single budget. The other mechanism for the school, in the event there were some unexpected, um, special education expenses, would be to come before the finance committee, or to put in an article, like they've done this year. What are the advantages, from an accounting standpoint and from a transparency standpoint, of having two different accounting mechanisms?
Um, I would say I'm not aware of any advantages to that. I think if the school department was here, what they would argue is that since they never know when, they may need an extra hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars. That if in the middle of, say, February, they needed two-hundred thousand dollars, and they did not have access to this account, that they would then request a special town meeting, and we would have to determine how to come up with two-hundred thousand dollars at that point. So I think that that's what they would argue.
Why would they have to request a, um, I mean, can, can we take money out of the stabilization account? Could the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen approve taking money out of the stabilization account on an emergency funding basis for any of the...
You're assuming the town stabilization account?
Yes.
No, that's only town meeting vote.
Only town meeting. Okay. So in past years, other than this one time, how many times has, has the school needed funding such as this?
They have not.
So this was the first time this happened?
Yes.
So I... And I, and from what I understand, the, the purpose of this is just to approve creating the account. It's not approving any funding going into it. So what would happen is either next fiscal year, the school would either request that we take the excess funds from their budget, which I don't anticipate there would be any, and transfer in there, or it would have to be a, an appropriation?
Yes.
An appropriation of tax revenue to go into this account?
Yes.
Oh, this seems to be a tool that they, they want in there, because I know things haven't come up, but, but it looks the way that, seven-seventy-six, because that, that, that thing is not funded correctly anyhow, and, uh... So in the, in the future, there could be, there could be some problems there. I mean, I don't, I hope not, but, uh, no money is going out, and it's gonna come from their budget. Okay? And it'll be appropriated into their budget. And really, their money, they control.
Well, it's not necessarily what, what could happen is the money could be appropriated from the tax revenue side
Right.
into that account versus us just funding it through the school's budget. And that's what I like about it, just being in one budget. Similar to what you spoke about with the task force a couple of weeks ago, is it's, it's a little cleaner having everything in one place. And when you say, well, what are our total school expenses, we go to one place.
So, I, I see what you're saying. There might be some advantages. I think, I'm happy with the controls that are on it. I think having the school committee and the Board of Selectmen approve spending from it, um, is good. In putting money into it, we could always, we don't have to put that article on the warrant for a town meeting. So, we would have, um, fairly good control and transparency on putting money in and taking it out, because it would all be done right here. I don't know, I see it as an emergency fund. I don't know.
Yeah, it is an emergency fund.
Yeah. Honestly, either way, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal to have it or not to have it, because we have money in stabilization, we have free cash. But it does give us immediate access to it should there actually be an emergency. So that's the benefit, I guess, is we wouldn't have to host a town meeting. We could do it here.
Would you like to make a motion at that effect?
I don't know, the effect will us?
I believe we're not in there. As read.
I don't know, I mean, I'm fine with it, I don't have any concerns with it, I think the controls are fine. But I'm not passionate about it either way.
Yeah, so at this point, the motion is either to recommend or to not recommend it. Um, I think that we, we just know, I hope I'm not right, wrong about this, but I don't believe that there's any concern about who is going to move the motion. It would be the school department, and it would be a school department member. So really, the real, the vote at this point is whether or not the board wants to recommend or not recommend.
I'll make a motion to recommend it.
I'll second the motion.
There's a second. Any discussion? House in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so order. For the next article? We gotta hold on.
You know what, I'm sorry, could I amend that? Um, also, please, if you could approve the motion as well. We should just do it, just to be safe.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say that again, Dave.
Just approving the motion as presented.
House in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Uh, the next one is article thirty-nine and article forty, which are the two pilot agreements.
Okay, so there's, there's no agreement in place. The chances of them having an agreement by June third are slim to none, I would guess. If we... Our options are...
Yeah, at this point, it's going to be on the warrant. We can't amend the warrant. So, really, the option right now is, is that if you want to take a formal vote, is that I would just say the Board of Selectmen would refer to voters, because you don't have anything to recommend, or not what to recommend, there's no contract in place. So it would just be referred to voters. The understanding in the, I think, fair assumption is, is that neither one will be moved. Obviously, if something happens between now and then, we get new information, I'll present it to you. The one thing I would let you know is that they do not have until June third. By your bylaw and by state law, this is an annual town meeting. That warrant must be posted no less than seven days from the meeting. And when it is posted, everything associated with it must be available to the public for their review as well. So they would have to have it done sometime, I think I counted it, was around March twenty-seven, uh, May twenty-seven.
So from a, just from a logistical standpoint, why, why aren't the Board of Assessors rescinding this?
They can't rescind it, it, it's on the warrant. We, we voted last time to be on the warrant, we're already at print, there's nothing, we can't take it off the warrant. Had I known this, then what I would have done on this agenda was I would have had an agenda item that said, move to remove the following articles. One would have been the Conservation Planning Board, um, article, and there would have been these two pilots as well. But I didn't know any of this until yesterday and today.
Okay. So you knew ahead of time about the other article that was rescinded? And that's why that one can be rescinded?
It's, it's not being rescinded off of the article, it's still going to be on the warrant.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Had I known all this prior to the forty-eight hours posting, then I would have placed it on the agenda, and we would have taken off the warrant at that point.
Okay, I'll make a motion to refer to voters on these two.
Is there a second?
Is that article thirty-nine and forty?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Second of both. House in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So order.
Next one was article forty-four.
So they're not gonna move this? I'd like to make a recommendation, or, I'd like to recommend that we don't recommend it, if, just in case it is, something changes and it is presented. I'm not in favor of this article.
Which article?
The, um, forty-four, it's the, um...
The parking?
The zoning, no, no, the, um...
Oh, the zoning, okay, sorry.
Hundred-foot square for the, in the buffer. I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of the article, I know that the Conservation Commission has changed their opinion, and is no longer supporting it, but just in case it does, because someone could still move it, right?
Yes.
Um, so I guess just in case, I'd like to make a motion that we do not recommend this article.
Second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion on that? That's article forty-four. House in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So order.
The next one is article forty-five.
Okay, so this is the, the parking article?
That is correct.
And I just didn't feel comfortable walking out of here when we spoke about it, that this would not affect a business that is being sold. And I'd just like to get some reassurance on that, that if we have a restaurant, and I'll use Niko's as an example, it's a very successful business, if that is sold to a new owner, they won't be restricted based on this bylaw.
So, uh, with that in mind, is that I sent an email off to town council earlier today. I informed him as to my understanding of the law. My understanding of the law is as follows, is that if you have an existing business, they operate under current bylaw. We change the zoning bylaw requirements, and then that business decides to sell to somebody else, that as long as it does not change use, and it does not remain vacant for more than two years, then they are still grandfathered in as the previous by, bylaw. I sent that email off to legal counsel. I then followed up with a phone call. He advised me that my understanding of the law is correct. He will be issuing us a letter, so again, we will have it in hand at town meeting. But in the meantime, I can tell you that my understanding of the law is accurate, and it will not adversely affect an existing owner such as a Niko's, when he or they decide to sell, as long as it does not remain vacant for more than two years, or change its use.
So based on that, I would recommend that article. Make a motion to recommend that article.
Second. Article forty-five?
Article forty-five.
Okay, is there a second on it? Discussion? House in favor?
Aye.
And the last article is forty-eight in reference to Pearl Road.
So my understanding is that the finance committee is not recommending this article by majority vote?
That is correct. So they rec, they decide not to, uh, recommend it by a four-to-two vote. At the finance committee meeting, the person who spoke initially about it was Mo McCarthy, who also sits on the Conservation Commission. He is, um, he is aware that when the Conservation Commission permitted Pearl Road, that Pearl Road was always to be a private road, and remain a private road. And the Conservation Commission then made certain concessions to the developer, which is typical when somebody is going to do a private development, as opposed to something that would eventually be turned over to the town. Now, they can't be serious, um, concessions, because obviously, they still have to follow the laws. But, you know, you could tweak a little bit on the edges, and they do that for, for all the time for residents as well. However, what Mo's contention is, and I understand his, his, his argument, is that some, or maybe portion of that development may not have been fully developed had everybody been known that it was a private road versus a public road up front. Now, I've had that conversation with the chairman of the planning board. He has a little bit of a different twist on it. He thinks that we still would have been able to fit all twenty lots on it. Um, and there seems to be some disagreement between the two boards. But at the end of the day, the Conservation Commission, um, has always believed it to be a private road. Mo McCarthy then had that conversation, and the conversation then led into that we have a lot of private roads in town at this point, that were permitted originally as a private road. And if we are going to allow Pearl Road to become a public road, then those other developments will then obviously ask for the same. Now, in private road developments such as Pearl Road, they are required to do an HOA, uh, which is an agreement between all the housing members there. And they pay so much money into it, however they determine, monthly, quarterly, annually, and then that pays for the upkeep of what they're responsible for. Pearl Road is just like that, they have an established HOA. It has been memorialized with the Registry of Deeds, and so everybody in, on Pearl Road has it. And when they were here last, uh, there was a handful of residents. What their request is, is that they would no longer be responsible for the road in some associate items to the road, such as catch basins, but that they would still remain in control of the septic system there. We have not seen the final agreement, they've been working it out with our legal counsel, so I don't have an agreement in front of me. Obviously, we'll have to have one before town meeting. The one item I do want to say, because I had bad information, or old information, or maybe unclear information, is that Mass. DOT, one of the arguments to accept the road is that Mass. DOT reimburses us, uh, for every mile of road, and they do. I have been led to believe before that it was fifty dollars per mile. That is not necessarily accurate, because nobody can actually tell me at Mass. DOT what the specific formula is. They actually take into account three things. They take into account road miles, employment, meaning, um, your employment ratio, uh, and also your population. They put into some logarithm that apparently nobody really understands. And as of right now, the town of West Bridgewater is receiving about sixty-three hundred dollars for every mile roadway. But that's not a perfect formula, that doesn't mean if you build one more road, you get sixty-three hundred. That's what equates out today in FY nineteen. Uh, Pearl Road is twenty-one hundred and seventy-two feet, roughly a little bit less than half a mile. So if you were to do that math, uh, Mass. DOT reimbursement would be somewhere around thirty-one hundred dollars.
And this is also a shared septic system, and is part of it run underneath the road?
The pipes, I, I've got the thing from the, what else?
Are these drainage pipes or septic pipes?
Septic pipes, run under the road.
Yeah, so it appears that, according, again, I'm not an engineer, but I looked at the plans earlier today as well. But it does look that the water pipes, or the water line, the... the sewer line, all run under the, under the middle of the road and follow the duration of the road. Uh, again, from what we heard from last time, or what I've heard directly from the Planning Board, is that the agreement reached with them is that they would be responsible for the pipes in the septic system, we would be responsible for the road. The pipes go under the road, um, so obviously there could be, you know, at some later date, there could be some, uh, sometimes it maybe, it might be unclear as to what is causing the other for the problem. Uh, however, we have to see how the contract shakes out, and I do not have a copy of an agreement as to what exactly they're agreeing to and what the town's exposure would be.
Any other questions on that? I thought we picked up that from the, what else, so give you, I wanted to know where the septic system was.
So my, you know, just to restate it, my concerns is, it's a shared septic system, part of it runs under the road, we don't have a written agreement, it starts a precedent when we start accepting private roads, because when they're being built, I mean, it, it almost says, why not come into town, build a development with a private road, and then try to push it through later on as a public road and receive the additional, I mean, I, they pay taxes just like everyone else, but this has come on to us kind of quickly, and we don't have, I don't think we have everything in front of us to make an...
Yeah, but I, I know we're concerned about this, but also that's gonna trigger other, other, uh, private developments there. And if we do this to one, we're gonna expect, we're gonna get more requests. And so what do we open ourselves up for? You know, a lot of problems.
Yeah, no, my shared concerns, I mean, more so, my biggest concern is having pipe under it that we don't own or maintain.
Right.
Private septic.
It's not a good, uh, thing to do.
So I'll make a...
And you know, and I, like, I look at, like you two look at, we try to pledge our votes in the best interest of the town, and that's what...
Think of the whole, not just that one part.
The whole picture, right? And that don't look like that's in the best interest of the community.
So with everything in mind of what we discussed, I would make a motion to not recommend Article 48.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not recommended. Want to say that completes it, Dave?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
We're on C.
We have a vote on request for the transfer funding from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for the IT Department.
Yep, so, so the town runs a, a pretty sophisticated, uh, network, or IT network, we have to, we're a 24/7 business, uh, ambulances need to be of internet access while in the ambulance, police have to have it in the car. Our system currently is about seven years old, as you know, one of the capital budget items is to actually increase our network capabilities and to bring it up to date. Unfortunately, in the meantime, our firewall is now starting to fail. So we have had a couple of instances as it starts to fail, that means that one, people on the inside can access sites that they're not supposed to, because there are sites we're not supposed to as employees. More concerning though is, is that as that firewall begins to degrade, is that people from the outside could actually access, uh, information internally, and it's not that it's all public information, but remember we have bank accounts, social security numbers, that type of stuff as well, uh, just can't let it happen. So at this point, we've gone out to bid, we've received multiple que, requests, uh, multiple bids, the IT Department is telling me they need to transfer $20,000 to pay for it, it's something we critically need, this would come from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, I would ask for the board to support it, I would then bring it to the Finance Committee and ask them to vote in the affirmative as well.
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Site plan review, special permit, zoning Board of Appeal, Anytime Fitness located 181 South Main Street.
So as you're going down South Main Street towards Bridgewater, this is an old used car lot, they only closed within the last six months or so, the person purchasing it is looking toward, attempting to purchase it, is looking to transfer that into Anytime Fitness, basically a gymnasium to work out in, and then also retrofit the building so that there would be two commercial tenants in there as well, those who identified, go back to my page, thank you, um, those who identified as the gray areas, according to the Building Department, they have no concerns or objections, it's a traditional, um, site plan review and a commercial call it over.
So, there's one business going in there or two?
Well, it'll be one business for gymnasium which is identified in that larger white area, and then they're going to retrofit two exterior areas, or, it, they already exist, but they're gonna retrofit those areas, because I think that they're hoping to be able to get some other tenants in there, maybe somebody needs a small office of some kind, maybe, again, I'm guessing, but you know, maybe a, I don't know, maybe a law office, a, a tax attorney or someone like that.
I have no concern.
No concern? Okay. You have any concern?
I was, I was curious about the hours, but I don't know if we're down to that level yet.
Um, we do not know what the proposed hours are at this point. If there is a concern, then my recommendation is, is to make a motion as to what you would like the hours to be or not be. Uh, I mean, some gyms are 24/7, you know, so if you do not want to see a 24-hour gym and you'd rather it be open, I don't know, just 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, then I would make that motion, we'll forward that over to the Permitting Board, which I think is the Zoning Board of Appeals in this case.
Can we just put the motion with an, expressing concern over hours and signage, and then let them take it from there?
Sure.
Because it, it, even though it's commercial, you do have some residents on the other side, so just to be sensitive to them. Um, so I would make a motion to... So what am I doing? I'm approving this, David, to pass on to the...
Pass to the Planning Board with those...
Thank you. Pass on to the Planning Board with expressing our concerns over hours of operation.
Second.
All in favor? So ordered. Site plan review, special permit, zoning Board of Appeals, Outfront Media oppose revision of existing static billboard, it's a billboard, it's an electronic billboard located 255 Walnut Street.
So this is the, um, billboard up, uh, near Walnut Street, the Walnut Street Bridge overseeing Route 24. We went to town meeting a year and a half ago, town meeting authorized us to be able to sell it, the people who own the rights to the billboard have now purchased it, contingent, uh, on receiving permits to be able to operate it. This board, the Board of Selectment, approved that purchase and sale agreement a handful of months ago, they are now going through the permitting phase to be able to retrofit it from a static board to an electronic board.
Okay.
So when I mapped this, and I don't know if it was an accurate mapping, there are some residents in that area, is this billboard going to be running 24/7?
So the Zoning Board of Appeals will have to put some type of limitations on it. I can tell you as I travel down, 'cause I'm here late, um, as I travel down Route 24, the current electric board on the right-hand side near Plassey Masonry, a lot of times, I think it's by 11 o'clock at night, is actually off. So my guess is they must have put some restrictions on hours, so if that's one of the concerns, let's place that in our concerns and send it to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Would abutting residents be notified of this as they would, like a, a special permit? Any other special permit?
There's a list in here of the people who'd be notified, 300 feet.
There's a list, Rick, that's correct.
Yeah, I share the same concern with the, uh, hours.
You gonna make that on a motion or...
Um... Where, where's that list?
Concern about the hours?
Turn to page 127.
Right, I will make a motion to pass this on to the zoning board?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, with expressing concerns over the hours and the, um, the hours and the effect on the abutting residents.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Can we just go back to one, I may have voted on something I should have recused myself from, um, and I'm not sure, the 181 South Main Street?
Your daughter's in a butter?
My daughter's in a butter, yeah. I didn't think she was in a butter, but my daughter's in a butter.
Um, so if, if you believe that you want to recuse yourself, then what I would ask the board to do is to take a vote to rescind the previous vote. Uh, Selectmen raised then to formally announce that she is recusing herself due to the fact that her daughter is in a butter, and that a new motion to be made, seconded and voted on.
I'll make a motion to rescind the previous vote for 181.
Second a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, um, to, or, sorry, did you want to make the announcement first?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accuse myself from the vote because my daughter is in a butter.
And I will make a motion to, um...
All right, do we have a second to that motion? Your motion?
Nope, she's just recusing herself, it doesn't require...
She just recused herself, all right, don't you...
I make a motion to, um, pass the, um, site plan review to the Zoning Board for 181 South Main Street, um, with the concerns of hours and signage.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstained. Right?
I've accused myself, so I don't have to abstain, right?
That's correct, I'll just say it's 2-0, uh, in the affirmative.
Okay. All right. All right, application from, uh, transit vendors, parkers and peddlers licensed for Judge Russo, Hockamont Plaza.
Should that be June 12th, not May 12th?
Nope, so, um, so the chairman took, he has the ability to be able to, um, take some executive privilege. Uh, Mr. Russo came before the board last month, he asked for a handful of dates to sell flowers, it was approved, he forgot one date, which was Mother's Day. Um, so Linda reached out to Eldon, explained the situation, we didn't have another board meeting scheduled, it's obvious that he meant also to do Mother's Day, it was a clerical error on his part, so Eldon gave us to go ahead, we allowed him to go on, now we're taking, we're asking for ratification vote from the full board.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to ratify.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Okay, uh, the appointments?
So we technically take this under consideration for the next meeting, right?
Okay. Is there a motion? Take it under consideration for the next meeting?
Second a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, I'll go to the other page. Okay, uh, appointment, Old Colony Elder Service Board, Board Director.
So every year, the Board of Selectmen appoints one COA member to the Old Colony Elder Services Director, uh, Board. Uh, our current representative is Wendy Adams, I believe that my, the Council on Aging Director Merrill Mather is recommending Wendy again, so I am just asking the board to take that vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered. Water paper splice, contract to WV Mason?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vacation carryover request, EPW Foreman, Mike Hutchison, Assistant Town Clerk, Kevin Lund Dean. Okay, any problem with that?
No, motion to...
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved the minutes of March 25th, April 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Meeting minutes, April 25th, 2019, for review.
So moved.
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Communication reports from boards and commissions and town officials. Anybody like to talk? Anybody got anything to say?
I got a note.
Yeah, you were very quiet tonight.
We did miss one item, I believe, J., um, Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent.
Oh yeah, that's one, that was in the other, other thing, yeah. Ratify the contract?
Yes.
Which letter was that?
Oh yeah, that was, that was J., okay.
J.
All right, we'll go back to that. Ratify non-union personal contract?
So moved.
Vehicle Maintenance Superintendent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, this correspondent reports from boards and commissions, Memorial Day, Camilla Services, May 27th, that's the pack. You, you're not gonna be able to make it?
I won't be able to make it. I mean, if something should change, I'll let you know ahead of time, it might be a little last minute, but I don't believe I'll be able to make it.
If you do come, we'll give you the whole thing, the speech. The whole word.
Don't do that to me. Too short notice, I won't be able to make it.
Just taking care of it, huh? Okay, uh, correspondents from the public determine the course of action. Anybody gonna speak out there or... How we doing?
Hungry.
Oh, you're hungry. Okay. Uh, I guess, uh, there's no comments, uh, from my board?
Got a little bit.
Are you gonna make it stop raining?
I'll try.
Okay. Sun coming out, it's a weekend, it's supposed to be a beautiful weekend.
Absolutely.
She's shaking her head.
And I don't have anything else to say. I'm all talked out.
That's all right. That's all right, all right. Okay, uh, go to the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, um, I'll quickly run through these, just an FYI to the board, since I have been here, we have attempted before our Board of Selectment meetings, since I always do an educational video about what is being presented on the meeting to better educate our residents, I do the same thing for town meeting, I'll just go through the articles and, and, and try to intelligently explain to them what town meeting is and what the motions are. Uh, second is, is that we currently have the Howard School project before, uh, the MSBA is currently funding half of our Howard School project for the new roof, we received funding for that this past March. Uh, the Chairman of the Board, the School Committee Chairperson, the Superintendent of Schools, and I always sign the documents when they come in, depending on what they are. Uh, MSBA has always allowed that, and now what they are stating is, is that they are looking for a specific vote of each board to allow those individuals to be able to sign in their respective capacities. So the school superintendent, this is our legal counsel who has reviewed it with MSBA, uh, providing us the following information, so he has asked the school committee to take a vote to authorize the school superintendent to sign the documents on behalf of her capa, in her capacity, and for the Board of Selectmen to do the same for mine. The vote that I've, uh, will be asking you to vote on is as follows, vote to authorize the town administrator to sign all documents related to MSBA projects and to ratify any previously signed documents for the Howard School gym's roof project. That way, it will allow me to continue to sign all the MSBA contracts going forward, and specifically to the Howard project that we just signed a couple of months ago, um, and they've now made this change, so Town Council's saying just to belt and suspend it to make sure that you make that specific motion.
Uh, motion to authorize the town administrator as signatory for all MSBA documents, including those that have previously been signed specific to the Howard School roof.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Senator Warren's Care Act.
Yep, so currently she is proposing a Care Act, and it is in reference to the opiate, um, crisis in America. She has asked Congress to provide $100 billion in federal funding to all states, that $100 billion would represent 100, uh, that is over 10 years, um, that would represent $120 million to the state of Massachusetts on an annual basis, and 56.6 million of that would go to the state in 63.6... and 56.6 million of that would go to the state, and 63.5 million of that would then go to the counties and trickle down to the cities and towns. We don't obviously have all the details yet. They are looking for support from all of their constituents. As you know, we are currently a party to an opiate-related lawsuit against the largest pharmaceutical companies. This is another opportunity for the town of West Bridgewater to seek funds in reference to this situation, this crisis. I think that obviously we have to grab whatever dollars that we can, because obviously we incur expense, not just in monetary terms, but also in human terms. So unless the board has any objection, I will write a letter on behalf of the board in the town of West Bridgewater supporting Senator Warren's act on this.
I have no objection.
No objection.
No objection.
Thank you. Next is fuel pump installation. I just want to give credit to the fire chief. He's doing a really good job in many areas, but one of them is, is that just in March, we went out to, we sought funding at town meeting to replace the pumps at the public state, public safety, I'm so sorry, at the fire station, Public Safety Building, and the bids came in. We went with the lowest bid. They've already been installed. The pumps have been turned on, and that's important, because I want to let you know, when we spend $4,100 a year of the Board of Selectment budget for our Searstich contracts, we go out to bid, and just in diesel fuel alone, we only pay $2.30 a gallon. And anybody who uses diesel knows that's well over $3 at retail. So for every single gallon, we save that difference, which adds up to a lot of money over time. So we want to make sure these pumps are up and running, and they are. Just an FYI to the board that it's been done and it's complete. Next is, on June 2nd, there'll be the River Walk. I signed off on it per the policy. Next item is 2018 Tree City USA, the town of West Bridgewater, based on the work that Chris Antelli and the DPW Department does, has again been awarded this through our bid day. It basically just says that we are doing what we can to be able to preserve and replant trees. The next one down is that back in March, is that the Board of Selectmen provided its top priorities through me to Senator Timolty as to what they were looking for the town to receive funding for. East Street, East Center Street project, the Matfield Street, Route 28 traffic signal project that we would like to be able to do in the near future, and also Selectmen raised would like to be able to have a research firm provide guidance through a research project on Chapter 40B projects and its impact on not just the town of West Bridgewater, but towns of our size. We had already sent that back in March. I noticed last week that they were accepting amendments in the Senate, and so I just figured I would take the opportunity to remind the senator of our priorities. I resent it to him. He received it, and I have notification on the next couple of pages that he indeed did file the amendments on behalf of the town, and I spoke to his office earlier today, and they said they are doing what they can behind the scenes to be able to secure funding on our behalf. So again, I want to give him credit, because he's doing exactly what we asked him to do. And the last is, nice news, is that the new West Bridgewater Country Club sign is up. It really looks nice. It incorporates the town colors and the new emblem that the Board of Selectmen voted on last in the fall. It looks really nice. Southeast Regional is the one that helped them design it. They did a very nice job to keep the cost down for them. In addition to that, they have retrofitted the entire front, where they've taken out the old plantings and put in new ones, did some more mulch, cut down all the old grass. So they're doing a really nice job in reinvesting into the facility up front. This past Monday, our West Bridgewater Boosters Club played golf there, and I can tell you the feedback that I received was all positive with the condition of the course. It is wet. Nobody's saying that it's not wet, but everything is wet. The course that I play at as well has been closed, because it's underwater. However, in the areas that they can control, from what I'm being told, is that they are doing, it is extremely noticeable that they are spending money reinvesting into the course, and the course is in much better shape. And just in case anybody asks, yes, they are still paying us and paying us on time. That's the end of my report.
Okay, I just want to add, it's not on your report, but the committee, Victor Flaherty, who we honor every year, specific in this year is Jerry Lawrence, who had many years of volunteer, and he will be getting that away.
He deserves it.
Yeah.
Thought it was a surprise.
No, it ain't a surprise.
Was it supposed to be a surprise?
Oh.
Okay. Well, he's earned it.
Okay.
First to a jury.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night. All right.